This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call to order the Minority Select Board on July 25th at 6:00 PM and we have all three members present here in Town Hall. The first item of business is welcome Dennis, thank you for joining us. Dennis is going to discuss notice of intent for the DASH weed harvesting program and the Lake Garfield drawdown, as well as extending the DASH contract with the current company doing one of the contracts. So do you want to give an overview of what you're here for today?
Dennis Lynch, come on down.
Well, good evening, good evening, yes. As was said, my name is Dennis Lynch and I'm here on behalf of the Lake Garfield Working Group. And Michael Germain, also a member of that group, has been here shortly. The group has also recommended to the Select Board to consider and hopefully sign state Weapon Protection Act forms, as was mentioned, to extend the current activities of diversized suction harvesting and drawdown in Lake Garfield. These forms are specifically Form 3, Notice of Intent, Form 3 Appendix, Ecological Restoration Limited, and the accompanying narrative entitled Evasive and Nuisance Aquatic Plant Management at Lake Garfield. That document was prepared by certified lake manager and also our lake scientist Hillary Kenyon. We also have a request to also sign the formal request to the Monterey Conservation Commission to extend for a period of one year the current order of conditions for diversized suction harvesting. So let's basically be over. I'll try to answer any questions that you have. I know it's, it's a little bit of a detailed document and these things can be...
It's pretty complete, though. I mean, it's well explained and well written and to the point.
Yes, and both, as you mentioned, both for DASH and the drawdown are now going to be mentioned, prepared as one document. One, just to save the town money and time, as opposed to having two separate documents that go through a process. It's better to have one document that is comprehensive and deals with both.
It makes a lot more sense since both of them have been used for the same purpose.
Exactly.
And that way you can have a comprehensive plan that covers all aspects of whatever you're intending to do. And if there's a third one, it could be rolled in there too, because it's part of the same plan.
You're absolutely right, and it does in fact mention other techniques or methods to control invasive weeds, specifically erasing water milquetoil in Lake Garfield. But those are mentioned and essentially they're there should the town choose to use them in the future. So, but the intent is brighten out those two particular techniques or methods to control the problem. And basically it's important.
Is it the same way we've done it in previous years?
Yes, this has been going on for, since at least 2015 and perhaps before that.
The DASH, the drawdown's been going on for even longer?
Even longer, yes, yes.
I don't really have, I mean, having read through those documents, yeah, most of my questions were answered by the documents itself, so.
Yeah, I'll have to say that the certified lake managers done a very good job carrying that narrative in support of the WPA Form 3 Notice.
Did you have a question?
No.
I move to approve the forms as recommended by the Lake Garfield offices.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Michael?
I just want to make sure that we, you know, also support the six-foot drawdown, because that's the part that might be controversial with the state.
Really? What's the traditional drawdown been?
Oh, it's been six feet for 30 years, but, you know, they're, they may be coming up with a new guideline before the end of the year, and so we're hoping to get ours approved before they do that, but they still may give us pushbacks based on... I don't know if it's based on the study, but UMass did this study, multi-year study, and Lake Garfield was part of that study. So they installed, you know, depth gauges that were continuously being monitored, and then they looked at the soil under the lake and the areas that were drawn down. And so, you know, the theory part could be interpreted in two different ways. I mean, the fact that we've been doing this for, you know, so many years and the lake is quite healthy and, you know, we have a diversity of plants and animals, but, you know, the things like snails and tadpoles and things like that live in that little area there, but they just move a little bit when there's a drawdown. They find places to be safe during the winter. So I don't think there's really any impact, but, you know, the state might interpret differently and want to protect those animals.
So maybe in future years we have to apply like that rule.
Yeah, it might, it might come up again, but I think we can definitely make a great case for what we've been doing. But even more so that, I know Jim wants to comment, but Jim mentioned when we talked about it that, you know, they use the six feet for flood control. And so they, they use that as a buffer, especially in the winter, and they can drag that six feet if there's a huge summer or winter rain or snow and, you know, there's potential for a flood. Well, the lake is going to buffer that for a long time, for many, many weeks, until it gets above the dam. So Jim supports the six foot just from the standpoint of, you know, flood management. So I think that's the other case we would make if there was an issue.
Yeah, to that issue, the document mentions not to exceed six feet. So it can be up to six feet or less than six feet, depending on the conditions around the member of the year in terms of the order in place.
So Sean, I think it was about maybe five years ago, was it, we had the drought?
2016, actually, yeah.
Yeah, so even longer. He only drew our town three feet because of drought into that. By the way, the fire department uses that to fill up their fire trucks. So they have an inlet there and that's how they fill up their trucks. So I think Sean was also concerned with the drought, that there wouldn't be enough water in there, that air basin or whatever for the fire trucks. So, I mean, Jim's going to be monitoring for all those different issues, and so he would have the discretion based on the weather, based on all that, deciding how much to draw down. But six foot is the maximum, that's as far as the dam, if the gates are completely open, that's how far it goes down.
Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
Well, they're all swamped out.
The process would be basically after the forms are signed, they go, first of all, the environmental monitor will be notified, so statewide indication of the project taking place. And also the property owners around Lake Garfield will be notified by registered mail and receipts will be available. That package will then be presented to the Conservation Commission under its authority for their review and recommendation and hopefully approval.
So we'll vote on approving the form as recommended, I'll vote yes.
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 So that's unanimous approval. We got a couple here.
And it's just you and Brandon, so. So your signature's on there, so it'd be out there like second on the waiting.
This is the letter, a request.
In terms of the a butter notice, is there some question whether you wanted the friends at Lake Garfield to do that or whether the town's going to do it? I mean, and Melissa, can you arrange that if there's a question of, you know, paying for it? We'd be glad to pay for it if the town...
What's happened in the past?
Well, I think for the drawdown, the town listed on, you know, if they were the applicant.
If it's related, if it's related to the DASH program, it probably would fall within the realm of the approved monies from annual town.
Well, I'll match, that, we could look into that. I can't say directly that it would be, but it sounds that it would be eligible.
No, sorry, I meant for the mailing, for the conference meeting. We could probably pay for it out of the special article, depending on what it's for and the wording. Otherwise, Michael, you mentioned friends like Garfield.
Yeah, we'd be glad to contribute if we need to, but I just want to, I'm more interested in the mechanics than the money, like.
Who's going to do the actual mailing?
Right, who's going to arrange it? I don't know if Melissa was going to do that or the assessor.
Has it gone before the concomit other years?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yes.
So there have had to be a butter notice each time?
Yes, yes.
And who's done it historically?
I think the town, I remember.
I think the friends like Garfield.
Working on it, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much.
I've spoken to the assessor, received the list, working on it weekly, Lake Garfield Working Group. The only other fee will be for national heritage endangered species. The town is exempt from having to pay municipal fees for these forms, but except for you, we will extend to natural heritage for endangered species, and they charge 300.
And that, like, that has to happen every time, doesn't it?
Well, yes, yes. The lake does have endangered species, which Lake Garfield does. But the divers have been aware of that and do not go into those areas where those particular aquatic weeds are located, so.
I think we should say aquatic plants if they're an endangered species.
Very respectful.
Well, a weed is basically anything grown where you don't want it. Even a, even a harvestable crop that's grown where you don't want it is a weed.
Or a plant you want.
Yeah.
So Dennis, you're going to take care of the logistics part, because, you know, I don't remember how, I think it was Ken Wagner, if he did it. Somehow he arranged, he arranged it.
If you don't need them, I'll bring to Ken, I'll send you a copy.
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
For all your work on this, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Jim.
Well, that was quite, Jim.
Yeah. Okay, I would move that we extend the, like, direct assisted suction harvesting contract to use on aquatics for an additional year.
I'll second.
Any others special on that?
Nope.
We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval of that. Peter will be in at 6:30, and meanwhile, we can keep moving. IT.
Melissa and I thought about it, I had broken it out into four different, the PCs, there's different sub pack, how many do we have, how many do we need? She's given me the data on providing the age of them, and then we'll go back and determine what software is on those. Can it be updated? You know, we talked about some of the computers have multiple users, but that's already set up, so we don't have to worry about that. The other is network upgrading the router, so that would be in our proposal. The PC policy, she's, Melissa sent me a draft today, we're going to work on a PC policy. And then the cloud usage, migration of the servers to the cloud, backup computers to the cloud, and how much space we need. So when we get the, determine the number of computers and the software, we can actually start asking both vendors to provide more specific costs. Because yes, last, I felt last season was a little hard to digest, you know, because, well, at least if you can buy it.
And it wasn't, I agree with you, it wasn't really apples to apples.
So it wasn't apples to apples, but this would be the...
But it was lots of apples to apples.
You know, we'll get into, but I would envision, you know, we'll probably have to do a Microsoft upgrade, you know, how do we do that? Do we spread it out over here or something like that? I don't, you know, we'll just have to get in there.
Maybe software should be another thing.
Of course. Well, it is, but it comes under the PC computers, you know, you know, virus protection and things like that. So, you know, Melissa and I meet on Monday, so I have the data by the computers, what we have, and then we can go through them. We can give a rough sign, rough indication of where it's at.
Well, for the purpose of trying to get a good comparison and asking for the, like, a standard, standard ask of both companies, would it make sense to agree on some basics? Like, we want to move to the cloud, we don't want a physical server now.
Well, I think, well, I'd probably work a little bit on the premise that we're going to the cloud.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to the cloud. I think there's no dispute, we need a new router, more secure, and, you know, has the protection to protect it. So we need a new router, you know, but we'll ask for specifics, who they do, you know, they didn't, I took some notes, they didn't, you know, who's that router, and then I can do a little bit of research on who they recommend and stuff like that.
I'd also like to have in their, like, since someone's talking about buying and someone's talking about leasing, and they said, well, you could buy it, if, if we're going to ask for, we're going ahead with replacing the routers, the net, updating the network, I'd like to see what the options are as well, whose equipment, what would be leasing, what would that cost? And whose equipment could be purchased and what would that cost? Because you can't really compare it if you don't have the numbers and the logistics.
Yeah, we can ask for specifics, give us a leasing option and a purchase option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I, I don't think it'll take a couple of weeks, we can break it down and then send them an email. So this way we can be comparing apples to apples.
And I also want to throw on the table that there, there's, and I know you know what I, just to keep in our minds, that we have the, what is it called, the compact, like, the group that's talking.
Yeah, so there's two things I was actually going to recommend to you guys, that we stay with, kind of, vendor for the moment. There is the Berkshire Regional Planning IT, I don't know what they're calling it, but, yeah, that group that we're working on, that I believe one of the goals is going to be to try to maybe get a regional IT person or shared IT person. I have a meeting this Thursday, so I'll try to confirm that. There's also the Maya Risk Management Grant, it's offering some money for cybersecurity stuff, but I just need to clarify with them what they'll actually cover. Maybe staying with Tom right now and having him buy some of the software or hardware that this grant would pay for would help get us in the right direction.
So that might give us, potentially give us a little more time, but also give us, the grant could provide money to pay for the networking upgrade.
Yeah.
And the regional group could potentially provide another service provider at a, at a more affordable cost, but we got to get from here to there anyway.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we couldn't work with one of the new companies to get the grant as well?
I mean, just personally, I, you know, Tom is familiar with everything, and I think, you know, there's a somewhat learning curve with the new companies.
I would just feel bad, like, I, maybe I should, but I'm just thinking, like, if, if we're talking about something in the next six months, then doesn't it make sense to start a contract with somebody knowing we may be segueing out? Of course, we don't know what the timeline on, is on the Berkshire Regional, just because even if they come up with a plan and try to execute it, hiring someone could be an issue too, so it could be more than, like, we don't know what the timeline is. But like, I think to lock us into a contract with somebody when we're thinking of a completely, potentially being involved in a completely different plan, that was my thought. But I, I'd easily walk out of it by a good argument, and I just don't like, I'm committed to it.
And in times hourly, right now, I mean, both those contracts were set fees for a year or a month. So it is, we just went up a little bit to 85, I believe it was, an hour.
So if we, if we had a network plan, would you perhaps ask him what he would charge for the same thing?
Yeah, I don't, was he more of a PC specialist than a network specialist? Because lots of times there's two distinct responsibilities, so.
If he's working in the school systems, I'm willing to bet he's familiar with networking issues as well, because there's all the school systems.
Well, they, they do have that, but is that, my understanding, his specialty's been helping on the desktops.
No, that's been what he's been used for.
He's used for, oh, to, for asking.
The worst that it can happen is that he said it's out of his specialty and he doesn't want to do it.
Right.
But I think we should at least ask.
I think you can ask, but I think, you know, you go long-term when you want, you do a router and a network. One of the two vendors last week, in my opinion, might be better to go, because they're going to support it long-term. They're not dependent on one person. If we're a PC, you know, there's a lot of people that can service PCs, because we're going to be doing very elementary PC. So when we get into, you know, the routers and looking at it to see if it fires, if protection and doing all that upgrades, you know, we're probably going, going with someone that's got multiple people that, you know, you're going.
Have a bigger, a deeper bench.
Right, deeper bench will be even more important.
Well, and the thing is to, Shannon CSS was the only annual or monthly, like, recurring cost, the way that I read the contract was $30 per month for anti-divers and endpoint detection, which is $420 a year and $2,800 for the, annually for the network service. And there's no additional hourly rate unless there's a network reorganization, it seems to me. That's the way I interpret it. Unless we also get other softwares like Microsoft 365, then that would obviously be an additional.
But we're going to have that regardless.
Some more, it's, it's not, from my perspective, it's not if, it's when.
Yeah, but I'm just, and that, that cost is a function of getting the software, not a function of who's helping us integrate the software.
Melissa and I will keep working it.
And I, like, the deeper bench is a really good point. And we have no way of knowing what's going to happen with the Berkshire group, right?
I, yeah, I'm kind of, I would lean against kind of a shared IT director to the extent that if we go with a company like Wayley or CSS, they are shared, they share services to, you know, to the extent that they have multiple clients.
Right.
But the difficulty, you know, I think is with a...
When you only have one individual servicing and group of communities, who gets priority as always?
Yeah, and with a contract with a service provider, there's a little bit more, I feel like the Select Board in town has a bit more flexibility on making sure that we get everything that we need to get, as opposed to someone who becomes an employee of the town. Then we're, then we're engaging with them as an employee of something that we know little about, and it's not necessarily the worst, I just feel that town has a bit more leverage when we're, when we are contracting out of service rather than having an employee.
It would be good to have a clear, like, I think it'll be good to have folks that are, I'll call them closer to the point, only because the discrepancy between those two is pretty large. That, and, you know. Okay. Thanks for the update, friends.
Good, thank you. The next item is the Bidwell House Museum application for the Bidwell House Museum Summer Party. Are there any questions on that?
I would, I would propose that we approve the Bidwell House.
I second it. Are there any questions, some questions? Call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval of that. The Southern, the contract with Southern Berkshire is with Southern Berkshire now, so the ball is in their court. Just a couple small updates. One is the sentence about if we paid someone else to cover a hall in Monterey, Southern Berkshire pay, I would move, because what it turns out is that some towns are paying Southern Berkshire for paramedic level intercepts if they don't have paramedics in their own ambulance, like New Marlborough in particular, I think there's a few other towns. Other than that, we're covered by the mutual aid agreement, because we have, at this point, we're paying Southern Berkshire for their services. And so if New Marlborough comes, they're coming on the mutual aid agreement, so we don't pay them anything. Same as CO notice, we don't pay them anything. The only reason some towns are paying Southern Berkshire is because they're getting the regular, basic EMT calls, it sounds like, at a, well, I have the memorandum of understanding action. They're getting them on a mutual aid basis. But if they are requesting an ALS, Advanced Life Support Level Intercept, where Southern Berkshire comes and meets their ambulance, so they have an ambulance out, they just can't provide that level of service, then they're paying Southern Berkshire for that level of service.
That does clarify the situation, so, yeah, okay. Anything else? You said two things.
Other than that, I just, I left in the items that we were looking for, input response time and the level of care. And then we will just wait to get back, maybe this week, maybe next, and then we'll get back to that whenever they get, get back to us. And that's that.
I have a comment for you.
Hello.
Hello.
Peter, thank you for joining us. Are you ready to go right now, or do you want to wait till 6:30?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Is that the hot seat?
Yes.
I'll sit over there.
So there's, I think you've probably been updated, but we did end up signing the ARPA agreement to look at the fire company buildings.
I heard that.
And so today, it sounds like, well, to back up and finish up on that subject, the fire company discussed and they are willing to look, entertain a proposal with more details.
Great.
So that's why we ended up signing it. So we'll move forward on that, and then separately related to that grant, there's updates on the closed landfill that you have to offer.
Yes. Several things, six, I think. We had a meeting with Tom Spake of the DEP, he's the regional guy. He's been in touch with Jim Hunt various times over the years, well, Sean and then Jim, about monitoring the closed landfill. They have a good relationship. He called me Tuesday last week, say he would be in the area and that I want to meet him and walk around. Two members of our group, plus Mark Little from Cool Fun. Just walked around the little perimeter road that they use to get to the gravel bed, which is kind of the border of that parcel. Talked about closed landfills, DEP is well disposed for solar arrays and closed landfills. They've done it various places around the state. There's one in Stockbridge. Steve Schatz, who was the Stockbridge select person who initially steered me to Beacon. He led that effort in Stockbridge to put an array on their closed landfill. So there, there were, there was just general agreement that it's a good idea. Tom mentioned during our walk and talk that the DEP will need test pits, 10 to 15 deep, to delineate the borders of the closed landfill and find out how much fill is on top of the dumped material. So, and he suggested, when he mentioned that, well, the town has some equipment, they could dig the pits. I said, okay, hello. And Beth told me, don't worry about it, the developer usually assumes that responsibility. Because the DEP needs to know the extent of the landfill and the developer needs to know it, because there are different requirements for founding the ground mount solar panels over a landfill. It's done on cement blocks, they don't dig, especially deep, the way they do when they put down poles for arrays on... It's done on cement blocks, they don't dig, especially deep, the way they do when they put down poles for arrays on other types of land. So that was a relief, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that. That was basically the extent of our visit with Tom. Before that, Beth had told us that to comply with procurement protocols under the statute, and I can't quote it off the top of my head, that she is planning to use for procurement of the RFP for a solar array on the landfill. The town needs to designate the land as available for lease. It requires a vote of people at town meeting. She drafted some language for the Select Board to publish as the, as the material, the language that will be voted on at the town meeting. It's a very preliminary step, it's just a matter of saying that this land is available to lease for the purpose of the community shared solar array, which is what the Metagrant is requiring us to do, the community shared aspect of it. So, the language of that article, I can, I can give you a copy of this. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to take all necessary steps to lease a portion of the parcel of land owned by the town of Monterey, located at Fortidool Road in Monterey, and identified on Monterey Assessor's Map Sheet two three one as parcel number two three one double oh six triple zero, total area about eleven point four two acres. For the design, installation, operation, and ownership of a community shared solar PE system and battery energy storage system for an initial term of twenty years and for up to two additional five-year terms by mutual agreement on the parties. The lease will be on such terms and conditions as the Select Board determines are in the best interest of the town and consistent with all governing laws. Pretty basic, very preliminary, can't issue an RFP until the town has, you know, identified the parcel as being available for lease. So that requires a town meeting. I'm hopeful that we don't have to wait till almost a year from now to have that vote. I don't know if you have other issues for which you expect to have a special town meeting in the meanwhile. I would hope that if you do, and maybe even if you don't, we could, we could deal with this ASAP. There's another issue that also would probably come before a town meeting. And that has to do with the solar zoning bylaw. I communicated with John Levin, and I have communicated already several times with Tom Sawyer about the solar bylaw as it is now. I said a long time ago, it was the consensus of the working group that the one parcel owned by the town in back of the pavilion down to the ball field that is designated for large-scale solar as use by right is an inappropriate site. It's east facing, it has relatively mature forest, and if that were clear cut and filled with solar panels, I sure wouldn't like the way it looks in the center of town, and I think there would be reasonable opposition. Large, large-scale solar requires a seventy-five foot setback. Utility scale solar requires a hundred and fifty foot setback. It's not clear whether that setback is from the solar panels themselves, or maybe the fence around the solar panels. There's that ambiguity in the bylaw as it's written. My understanding is that the bylaw was boilerplate that was drafted, I don't know, five or ten years ago in order to access designation as a green community. It was kind of a thing that was happening at the time, and everybody wanted the funds from the state as a green community. We still haven't got that designation. The eleven and a half acre parcel that's now occupied by the town garage, the salt shed, the transfer station is relatively small for the use. A hundred and fifty foot setback makes it that much smaller. I think that the working group would favor adding that parcel to be designated as use by right, which would relieve it of the setback requirements. There's no way, and it was my presumption, and John Levin confirmed, that there's no way to make the setbacks go away just because we want to do a solar array on that parcel. That would require a variance, and there's really no basis for granting the variance. A further consideration is that we've been including Ghul Farm in our discussions of solar. They're interested in doing a large-scale solar array on bordering land. Or they're at least interested in seeing what's possible and what the cost would be. Their gravel pit is nearing the end of its life, and it might, the re-landscaping of the gravel bed might fit well with a solar array project. The additional acreage might be advantageous, although there would be two owners of one array that went across the boundary on Ghul Farm land. And that's a complication for any, any energy developer putting out a bid on that project. But it might make the difference because the landfill, town-owned land is relatively small for that kind of project. For all those reasons, we wondered if it would make sense to amend the bylaw to read so that if a single solar array was to be built on contiguous parcel of land, you might relieve the setback requirement across that boundary. It's, it's something to consider. So we were going to present draft language for amendments to the solar bylaw to the Planning Board meeting day after tomorrow. But that's been postponed till next week, so we'll do it then. So those are two issues that belong in a town meeting for a vote. If the Planning Board agrees that some kind of revision of the solar bylaw makes sense, and if they want to, you know, make a proposal to the voters to vote on it.
So the two things that would go to town meeting would be allowing the Select Board to lease that land.
Allowing, allowing the town, allowing the town to vote on the Select Board's proposal that that parcel be open to lease for the purpose of the solar.
And then the second one would be changing the zoning bylaws in some way to allow that, to allow that, to avoid the setbacks.
Yes.
Revision of the solar array bylaw.
Yep. And I think the most expedient and sensible way to do that is to designate that parcel as use by right.
I would agree. It's a lot less complicated than, than the other row.
Yep. I'm not saying that, you know, we should take that parcel out, but I don't, you know, I don't happen to think it's appropriate. Not for large scale.
There's not necessarily a reason to remove it unless we need to for some other reason, sorry. We had discussed previously having a special town meeting in November, and, and actually, the Select Board's even discussed the possibility of doing two, setting the precedent for two meetings a year, one of which would be more budget-centered and, although inevitably other things come up, and the other one which would allow for not just a few budgetary items, but the other items that are weighty, that need discussion, but everybody's exhausted by the time we finish the budget. So, and I think the date we floated was the first Saturday in November for that. I don't know if we're still thinking of it, it hasn't come up recently, but I thought we were definitely disposed towards that, so we're just letting you know. And I, I think the bylaw committee is gonna have something ready for, for the town to look at by then, so.
General bylaws or zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
But the planning board could obviously piggyback on it.
But once we're having a.
If we're doing it. I mean, it's not set in stone, but it's, it seems like it might be a good idea.
And it's a target date if you're.
Right, well, that would give the.
Those, the schools.
Oh, right.
And I believe based on the timing that Tom told me, October, it's, it could be as soon as September. I've suggested to him to ask them, I guess you have to have it within thirty days after they put you on notice or something.
Okay.
Thirty days posted, thirty days. So he was suggesting that they were to come the end of August, that would mean September, and I asked if he could tell them to come in September. So we could at least do it in October, when hopefully Free Cash would be certified and. Did you guys see the, the very late email from the RCPV?
Yeah, I didn't catch it fully.
I saw that, I saw it in the paper.
Basically, the letter from her suggests that you can consider a, a select, a joint Select Board meeting of all eight towns.
Or, or individual meetings.
Yes, or individual meetings, but even the proposal that we do eight town Select Boards was like, I was like, wow, that would be an interesting meeting, it might be worth doing just to see what the heck happened. That's a lot of people. Yeah, nice question, Peter.
So we have the, we have those two items, well, really, we have the one, which is allowing the town to lease the land, because other ones really the planning, the planning board matter, but we have those items for town meeting. And then in the meanwhile, is there anything else that, that you need from us?
Want to emphasize that I'm available for any discussions with the fire company. One thing that had come up in discussions with Beacon is that they did a project in the eastern part of the state that involved putting a membrane on a steel roof, which bought twenty years of life for relatively little cost. And certainly a lot less than replacing a roof. My understanding is that the trusses on the pavilion are fine, it's the sheet metal that's deteriorated. And, you know, if it, if this system, whatever it is, and I can, I can refer the fire company to the, you know, the people who do this. If that system has a twenty-year warranty, that's perfect for solar, because who knows what solar panels on rooftops will be like in twenty years. It might be a whole different thing. And as, as you see in the ground mount solar, twenty-year lease, for the five-year, two five-year extensions. It's just reasonable guess as to when you want to rethink making electricity from panels. Also wanted you to know that a while back, I had a conversation with Alan Tellio, who has a house here in Monterey but lives in Cambridge. He's a former employee of Nexan, he's very knowledgeable about solar stuff. And he's very forthcoming with his knowledge, doesn't want to serve on the committee, I can't understand why. He's been a great resource, and he said, when I talked about the landfill, he said he'd be glad to talk to people he knows in the business to see whether they think it's a survivable site. He's happy to do that, so we'll have some good information there fairly soon.
Thank you. Thanks for the update and for all your work on this.
Sure. This is, this is the language, if you want it, I can email it to you as well.
That would be great.
Okay. This is what Beth wrote, and I, because I can't help myself, edit it a little bit, put it that way. So I'll send you both, and I'll put a note on it saying which is which. And we emphasize that it's something that should absolutely yes be reviewed by town council before it gets on the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Sure.
All right, so we'll keep those on for our special time meeting, so.
Any word from the finance committee?
Tomorrow maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll have to.
Great, okay.
So nothing else? The next item is about payroll, and it's developed even since I added the agenda in a way.
Oh, no, I, I just want to, I, since I'm not, I want to give you the opportunity to present it, but I also want to put out there that some of the stuff you sent me, if we were gonna raise it at this meeting, would have to be an executive session, and all the parties involved would have to be noticed, and that wasn't done. So I think you should be very careful in what you.
I, I'm not. No, I was like, you're big, you're big enough, but generally, there was a couple issues that, that have happened. One was during the split payroll, which was the two-week period, which overlapped the end of fiscal year twenty-three and the beginning of fiscal year twenty-four. And the principal assessor was not paid properly. Normally, he gets a two-week salary, the same amount every two weeks. And for some reason, I noticed on the pay warrants, when I reviewed them, both were turned out as hourly numbers, on an hourly basis. And the first number, which amounted to essentially a two-week period worth of pay, was crossed out. And then a lower number was, was written in, which seemed like a fairly accurate number, prorating the two-week period over the end of that fiscal year. But then the beginning of fiscal year twenty-four was a, was a much lower number. So at the end of the day, he was shorted a significant amount of money, almost a week's worth of pay. I touched base with the treasurer, who said that. She said that FY twenty-three was because he was paid the balance that was left in the expense account for his salary position. According to his time sheet for FY twenty-four, it generated hourly instead of salary, which is true. But also, based on the pay sheet that I received, something like thirty hours of work, and for some reason, five hours showed up.
I guess five is what he clocked in for.
Well, the.
During that period. Yes, so if, if we are gonna discuss this, I will bring up the notes, but I thought you were gonna refer it to HR.
Well, my.
That's, my next question is, why is this before us? Because all of this is stuff that, like, we set up all these processes, we hired an HR person. Why was this not dealt with by the town administrator and with a backup of HR instead of before us? Because, like, we went to a lot of trouble to hire an HR person and to put things into play to keep these kinds of things out of public meeting, because I don't really think they belong here unless there's an accusation being made, in which case we have to make a decision, but we also have to have executive session. So I just want to know why we're circumventing the process that we spent all that time setting up.
I think just because it's to me an issue of just people need to be getting paid in full and in a timely fashion.
Yeah, but that, again, but we have a process for that.
Yeah, so the town administrator was notified of the. Yeah, so the town administrator was notified of the.
The town administrator was notified of the whole situation. When when Don wasn't contacted by the treasurer when I said he would be, Don didn't come to me to say, hey, I didn't get contacted by the treasurer, can you help fix this, which I would have been able to do like that. No, he ran to Scott Steibl, would then make accusations of people altering time cards and messing with numbers, and then ran to you, and then you went to the treasurer, and the treasurer told you what it was, and still nobody told Don. So I got totally circumvented, and so did HR.
No, um, I, the treasurer was on vacation, but the treasurer's sperm didn't get anything to me for until Sunday, this most recent Sunday.
Right. But you reached out on Sunday, I had a whole timeline here.
No, I reached out on Monday, July seventeenth.
Seven seventeen.
Seven, right, seven seventeen at two forty, Justin reached out to Becky.
Which was last.
Seven seventeen, Becky responded with a brief explanation of what they believed happened, and that there was an error, Mr. Clausen will be reimbursed on the next payroll warrant. Becky explained that she would put a priority status on this for Sarah to review upon her return. Sarah did respond upon her return on early Saturday morning, sorry, Sunday morning. As no further correspondence regarding the situation came up, the staff believed at this point in time that the situation was addressed and would be fixed upon Sarah's return, as Sarah is the person who processes payroll.
No, I mean, I re- I reached out to Becky twice, and I, I just feel that, so I, and I've had problems, and I think that it's just, the board needs to be aware and needs to do something to make sure that people are getting paid in full and on time. And that's why I brought it forward, it's not, Susan, I think if it was bringing up an issue to discipline someone, that would be an executive session, but this wasn't about disciplining somebody, this is about.
Fair.
This is about fixing the payroll system, and so I'm not approaching the issue in a disciplinary way. I'm appro- I'm approaching it in a, how do we solve this problem and prevent it from happening again in the future?
So it sounds like there was a, okay, I I think I'm responding to the language that we used in Mr. Steible's letter. And made a thought, since I didn't know what you were going forward, I felt like, that's an accusation.
Well, one thing, one thing is for sure, I don't know if this is the payroll, but yeah, the end of, so in payroll twenty three, I mean, you can see exactly what it is here, which is that I can't tell you why it was done, but I can tell you that it was done.
And can you even say who?
No, I can't, but I can tell you that it was done by a person, and it's a problem.
A person meaning like it's just, it's written on it?
So where's see. And.
Did you ask, uh at this point, have you talked to the treasurer, or has anyone asked the treasurer why this changed? I think this, the whole thing gets more confusing, because it sounds like there was originally, as I understand it, there's the original problem of the split period. The pay period being in two different fiscal years. Then we add on top of that, so that it's not clear whether this was a trend or a problem or what, but on top of that, we have the fact that he's paid on the basis of a sort of salary system, but we also have a time clock, so in one part of the year, he was paid on the basis of salary and the other part, and that seems like it's a predator error, he was paid for the number of hours he worked, rather than for the portion of the pay period that fell in that fiscal year under the salary concept, right? And then we also have, and so it seems likely to me, given that stipulation, that whatever change was made was made because of someone's misunderstanding of the salary situation versus the hourly situation.
Totally, definitely.
I don't, I can't speak to mid-exactly, right?
Absolutely, but I'm, that's my point is.
But the system has an issue, right?
We can't have these kinds of problems where
Yep.
things are being changed and people aren't being notified, and all of a sudden they're short a good chunk of their paycheck, and that regardless of who or why is a management problem, which is why I've brought it to this board.
I I agree. Right, so then it seems like.
It's just not right to happen in this organization, I don't care, I mean, I do care at some point why,
And it is.
but I do care that the board needs to be aware, and the board needs to do something to make sure this doesn't happen.
So it seems like we need to, we may through the town administrator, need to inquire of the treasurer why, like, why that happened.
That's right.
Um.
Well, I asked her.
Cause it can't be fixed till we know why they did.
I got a fairly unsatisfactory response, frankly.
Okay.
Well, it's fine.
Which is just that it was spit out on an hourly basis, but why?
Right.
Why would that person even be in an hourly?
But yeah.
No, so the fiscal year twenty three, and this, all the salary employees, if they're monitoring their um department reports, would would know what's left in the balance, so you can't overpay the salary employee. So whether it was calculated out wrong and for what he was supposed to get during the weeks throughout the whole year, and maybe he's being, you know, paid more on a weekly basis or what, the amount that was left for the one week, instead of two weeks, cause remember it's like one week for fiscal year twenty three, was.
And did it fall, did the month fall exactly in a week?
Yeah, so I guess it did, it's.
It's June thirty.
It did. Right, so Monday, Monday to Friday ran, ran, so there was seven hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents left in the account. So what I'm assuming she crossed off and what he's looking for, is that when it pulled through, and I'm assuming, because I haven't seen it, um was that it pulled through what his normal week's worth would have been, however, there wasn't a week's worth left in the budget. So it was altered to give him what was left in the budget.
Yeah, so it was like a week's worth about exactly, and it was altered there, which is a good thing.
To seven fifty four.
Which is a good thing, it should.
So not put the account over, right, right.
And it should have been done. The problem is whoever did that should have then gone to payroll twenty four one and done exactly the opposite.
Opposite of it, right, yeah.
And made sure that over the two week period, the employee was getting paid the two week salary.
The same, okay.
And so that's my prob, that's why I'm bringing it to the board, it's not right to to have problems like this. I'm not bringing it in an accusatory way, I'm bringing, this is a problem that we need to prevent from happening in the future.
Right.
We've been told on multiple occasions that HR isn't in charge of the payroll system. I don't know who is or what is, but there's, it's just problems like this are unacceptable and need to be dealt with.
So essentially, what we need is a satisfactory response from the treasurer that not only did the payroll thing get fixed, but it it going forward, this sort of thing should occur again.
Right, right. Good, thank you, right, right.
And we need them to stipulate both why it happened this time, the error occurred this time, and what they're going to do to prevent it happening in the future, would that sum it up?
Yeah, I mean, I think the part of it's simple, it's like if you're going to be, if you notice an abnormality, or you're going to be changing something, even if you think it is absolutely the right thing to change, you have to be, you should communicate that as much as possible.
To whom?
To the person who's paid that you're changing, right? I mean, not everyone depends on their pay for necessities, but let's say we're paying one of our employees and they're depending on it for necessities, and then we're shorting them, and it's two weeks before they get it. It's just not, not okay.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to figure out if we want, if we want them to act in a particular way when something arises. I just think we need to be clear of what we want them to do.
Mm-hmm.
So the treasurer contacting the employee directly would be one option, the treasurer communicating with the town administrator, who then communicates with the employee would be another one, the treasurer communicating with the director of a department would be a third one, I'm not saying that I know what the best choice is, I'm just saying if we're asking them to have a communication, we should be clear on who we want them to communicate with. Thoughts on who that person would be?
Well, we can make a policy, um.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I think we have to discuss, we have to think about it. Mark.
So, so I would just like to just also add that I have had trouble with payroll as well, so and and again, I'm a salary by month, and the time clock, I think, doesn't really lend itself so well, I mean, I know you guys are all entering on salary by month, but I find it very confusing to figure out, but how do, like, it's not really clear, right? So back in February, I didn't get paid for something, Melissa and I looked at it together, back and forth, oh, I missed it, sorry, okay, fine. So then, alright, so then I missed something, so anyways, I submitted on June tenth for my last two months of the year, okay? Sometime in July, I never got paid, so back and forth with Melissa, a number of emails, finally she said, talk to the treasurer, she does payroll. So I talked to treasurer, she said, well, I see you entered it, but it was for a pay period that had already been done. Which I guess means she just ignored it.
No, it means it doesn't, we don't get notified it because you entered it in an approved, it it was the time period that had already passed, and the the um deadline to put your payroll in there had already passed. So she had already uploaded everything, it doesn't, it doesn't give us like a notification saying, oh, somebody added something to an already approved payroll.
Okay, so this is where I'm saying I think it's hard, because I, when I finish the month, I submit my payroll, right? But if it had closed out on the twenty ninth, you're right, okay, so that's what's happening, so it's not conducive, it's not conducive for salary. Bottom line is I don't know who to talk, no one's telling me why, I mean, I mean, like, there's no communication. And 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 here's just another situation, my son started working here at the beach July one, he's yet to get paid. I think by now that first week of July should have hit his bank account.
So his first check will be a live check because.
Okay, but shouldn't it have come by now?
Well, so I know Melanie, who started in the police department, got her checked for the twelfth yesterday.
Okay, but he's gotten nothing, and he started July one, but but but, okay, so here's the thing, does he talk to Sophia, because she did on board.
Start with me.
Okay, does she talk to his supervisor, does she talk to, does, who do, who who does he talk to? Because when I talk to you, you sent me to the treasurer.
I sent you to the treasurer because your your question was a little more complicated, and you were sending pictures, and and she did respond. I thought I saw the thing that said that you entered it.
Yeah, she said, I see that you entered it, but it didn't get processed.
Right, because I think she said it was already processed payroll.
It it makes, that that's not clear.
So what happens in that case? So like, let's say the payrolls are being processed, and the time sheet, or whatever that is called, comes in afterward for that pay period.
So it doesn't, it doesn't come, so what I showed you this morning in the payroll, you have to actually click on the dates of the current payroll. And if that payroll, so if you don't submit it by the Monday at ten o'clock, you did it after that, you you've missed the deadline, everybody knows the deadline.
But shouldn't it be closed? Shouldn't it be, there, cause there's some weeks that I try to enter, says this payroll is closed, you can't enter anymore, I'm like, okay, that's fine. But this was not closed, I I submitted it on June tenth for May and June.
This is really not the appropriate place to be discussing all this, you know, I mean, it should, if if there are problems, which Justin, this is claiming has been going on forever, which I knew of yours, and we did talk to the treasurer, um I had no idea about yourself, but I'm gonna try to.
Has it resolved?
But I have got my pay, yeah.
Okay.
I've been, I've been.
But only because I asked for it, not because anybody noticed.
Right, well, we wouldn't notice that.
But but if I said, but.
Everybody's responsible for putting in their own pay.
Yeah, and I did put in my own sign that I worked and I should get paid, but but it, then there's a problem with the system, if I'm putting something in that nobody's seeing, right, there there's gotta be, how how do I know then if you see it every week, if 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 there's no?
In other words, if a, if an employee submits a time sheet and it go, so it like goes into the void unless the employee themselves notices that they don't get paid, is that what you're saying, Larry?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
If if the desire is on the town administrator's part, and I and I can see where it's coming from, to come back, now the problem's being identified, and come back with a plan, take a week or two to come up with a plan with the treasurer, I'm totally in favor of that, I think that we need a plan, I think that there's been some mistakes and and changes that are that are inexcusable, like taking, on a split payroll, taking the last half of the first fiscal year and knowing that you need to change it because it's not gonna work, but then not going to the first half of the next payroll, and making sure that the two add up to a two week salary, I mean, I think things like that are are inexcusable. I emailed Melissa earlier today, um I think that we should maybe explore what our options are within this system or outside of it. And I'm open to either, but to make it easier, I know that I even have a hard time putting in for my select board stipend, I don't like to go chasing after money from the town, it was always, it worked out easily for me, not sure what burden it put on other people for two years, and then now it's kind of become a hassle to get my small stipend for volunteer position.
Why is it a hassle? Why just deposit to my bank account?
Well, I'm doing it for you guys, you're doing it because you have to enter your fire time.
Which I still don't either.
So have you ever come to me and said, I don't know what I'm doing and I need some help?
Yeah, cause the two.
No, you haven't, don't say yes, you haven't.
The two, the two emails that I finally got paid, I I, and one I attached screenshots to, but I had difficulty doing, and I feel like there could be some way, I mean, there's, I don't know how many people, it's probably between ten and twenty, I'm not talking salary biweekly people who are but the elected officials, like the board of assessors and the select board, that are making small stipends on a monthly basis, is there some way to do it easier than each one having to go in and input and knowing what the number is supposed to be and knowing where to put it twelve times a year?
The process is awkward.
Yeah, is there any way?
And he's he's basically using himself as the example of if it's happening to him, it could be happening to other people.
It's really not awkward, and I, and and you, these are like the first two complaints I'm hearing, but everybody else, I wish Jim had stayed. Every other department says that this is, raves about this, and how much easier it makes payroll, and so I just want to point out to your, to your thing, to your, um you said that, how how were you supposed to know that your payroll didn't go through, when you were scanning them, you didn't have any confirmation that it went through, and I believe on at least one, maybe two occasions, you came to me and said, how come I didn't get paid, and it was because your scanned email didn't go through. And there was no way for you to confirm that, at least this, we have a we have, we can see it in the system, I can give you, like, right now, I'm looking at Philip's check, and it was sent on the thirteen.
To what address?
The address that he would have put on his payroll, which is or in his um sheet, which is eighty Cornshire Road, Monterey, zero one two four five.
Oh, wow, that's, that's not what the mailing address is.
But that's what you put up, that was on the payboard, so that's what got entered in here, I I'd have to go back, I'm just looking in the actual payroll system.
Alright, okay. But but, but he filled out a direct deposit slip, so nowhere did it say what your mailing address, it says where do, it says what's your address. But that that's a different point, so the check is lost, it's gonna have to, thank you for that information.
So I can ask them to put a stop payment on if you want and reissue it?
Well, it'll probably just likely get returned to you.
Why would it get, like, you, if somebody.
The eighty Cornshire Road isn't a valid address, we have a P O box.
Right, but I, if I accidentally sent a postal service thing to Twenty Grisell Road, they put in my box and yell at me for putting the wrong address.
Well, and the old days of case, they just.
Yeah, they, I, I can judge.
Here they go, they turn, return everything to me.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think, I think what I'm just saying is that if if Melissa, you just said that you you submit for you, for the for the select board members, right, so they don't have to do themselves, so what?
Mostly because I haven't had the time to train the two of them.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, so then maybe this.
Well, that's more difficult.
But I, your second year, Susan, I.
Well. So can, do you wanna just submit all of the elected
No.
uh salary monthly, because then we wouldn't have any problems.
I don't, no, I don't, cause I think, because part, part of the process is everybody's supposed to be responsible for putting this in, because for instance, we've had the
But you're.
there's, I notified you guys today of an overpayment, the assessors put, paid the, um, sorry, yes, the assessors paid themselves for one extra month in fiscal year twenty three.
So clearly there are problems.
You guys are supposed to be responsible, that's, you are supposed to be responsible for knowing what's left in your accounts, for submitting.
But we don't get the reports right away.
You get them on the, between the tenth and the fifteenth of the month.
Right, but remember, I had to ask you for, look, it's, you're right, this is not the time, but what I'm saying is the system, and when you, see, you don't go in and do it, when you go in and, see, you're gonna see that.
I'm gonna show you on Monday, you're gonna learn now, and you're gonna learn on Tuesday.
Submit it, okay. I I.
I'm just gonna pay myself for the year.
It it just, it, it's set up for hourly, that's why Highway loves it, that's why people love it, it's set up for hourly, it's not up, set up for monthly pay because it's every two weeks, so when I finish the month and I go to submit it for the next deadline, that, those weeks maybe have already been closed, but I don't know they're closed, so I submit it and nobody sees it, but I don't know, nobody sees it. So I'm just saying is, maybe there could be.
I think an easy solution to that would be is if you always submit on, say, a Thursday, because then you're within the timeframe, the current payroll will pop up on your screen, and if you do it on Thursday, you won't miss the Monday ten AM deadline, and and you'll be assured that it's gonna go through, or even Tuesday, if you do it on Tuesday, just make sure it's not.
But the month, but I like to wait till the month is over.
I'm I'm giving you a a way to.
So, so, okay, so then I can just get my money at the beginning of the month, I don't have to wait till the end of the month?
Technically, I believe by law you can, yes, I believe, I I have been told by law that an elected official can put in to get their whole entire salary the day after they are elected, and then they could quit, that's what I have been told.
Well, I'm gonna do that, yeah, I'm gonna do that, because it's, every three months, I know.
Okay. So if you wanna do that, that's fine, you're the one that's gonna have to explain to the voters.
Yeah, I'm going to. I will.
When you, if you Twitter, you die or something.
Oh, but I'm not, I'm not good, if I die, I don't have a good point, yeah, but if I die, I'm good, but if if I, I won't quit,
Why we don't have money to create the next one?
and I'll put it into the, and then I won't have to deal with. But if I die, I'm good, but if if I, I won't quit and I'll put it into the, and then I won't have to deal with it anymore, but it's been, it's been a little bit.
But you're certainly gonna have to deal with the fire company.
This is a weird.
I don't do the fire, I don't put in my fire company, fire department.
This is a weird question, but even though you you have a salary amount per month. If you enter your hours each two week period. Would that provide the reliability you're looking for or would that not work?
Well, yeah, so so someone could just change the pay structure, say, instead of getting monthly salary, you're gonna get a two week salary. And then at the end of the year, you gotta go for the rigmarole of saying it's a split payroll and you're only gonna eight days of this and then we'll get into that. If someone wants to change my pay that way, you can, I don't.
No, you can change, so that was set up that way because the elected officials decided they wanted to be doing it on a monthly basis. They not, we we do have, I believe, one or two that are paid on the by week because they need to check frequently or whatever. You don't have to be monthly.
No, I just was, I was just trying to figure out, cause I could see it being confusing where most of the pay cycles are by week, but you're right, this isn't the right place to talk about it. I was the one who originally said that.
I know the least amount about it, so if you put it in, does it give you anything confirming that it's been put in?
No.
No. I'm trying to pull it up here, I just can't.
Yeah, well, I think going back to the treasurer and asking them, oh, I take it they manage it or how's it, not sure how it's gone.
I don't know either, frankly.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, is there any other capability reporting from that system that you can do?
Or like when a when a person enters it?
Well, they enter, you get, get your confirmed email, you've entered this amount.
Right, cause it's it's a time card, so I'm I'm I found, I'm gonna pull it up and I'm gonna show us, cause we wanna do a tutorial, they're in the middle of a. Select board meeting, again, this is not.
Well, we don't have to get down.
No, I wanna show because that's why. So when everybody like, they don't see a screen like this, well, I'll show you what I see from my screen, this is, I see everybody's. Click on your time sheet, okay, this is how it's set up for an hourly employee, you log in and you. When you log in, it clocks in, it clocks out, for Mari and you guys.
I don't have an extra pay tab.
Okay, you may, it may be called something differently, it may be called stipend on yours.
No. And I told the treasurer that a couple of months ago.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up yours next, I'm gonna pull up yours next, so Mari has to go in and she enters a date here, she changes, this'll, it automatically populates the tax collector. And she picks pay category and she picks election. And then she puts in the amount and in the note, she puts, this is my pay for June, and then she hits. Save, and I'll show you how it looks once it's saved. So here's the pay period up at the top, that's how you know you're in the correct pay period, we're in, okay, I'm gonna go to one that's already been done.
I did tell you and the treasurer over emailed it, it was the case two months ago.
I was just trying to show you. Oh, so there there's no, there's no way for, it it doesn't send you anything, so so Mari's able to go in, anybody's able to go in and look at their previous pay periods. And see what they were submitted, and this is.
What they submitted.
But remember, I might have said I can't see them.
It only allows you to go back so far.
It it, the bottom line is like, I put it in, it was in, I didn't know the treasurer didn't see it. I didn't get paid, how would I know?
Back to go in, you can see, I can see all my.
Very confusing system. But if he's, I I think so, the secondary problem though is if she's saying she submitted it, but she doesn't get paid. At some point.
Right, so.
There there has to be, like, how do we rectify that, like, because she entered it, but it's, I guess it was after. You know, in a month where the end of the month fell. On a Tuesday.
Right, so we'd have to go back and see when exactly she hit approved.
So June tenth nine eight, nine eleven A M.
Right, I I'm.
No, because I have.
In the system, I'm gonna look and see what the system has issue for.
But that's, that's what it shows on my.
That's right.
On my screen, it says enter June, you're right, it's not the time now, well, I guess what my, what I'm saying is that. I think there are, there are other people having a problem with pay.
Other people are having problems.
Got it.
Okay, so the treasurer and Melissa will work on that and come back to us. The next item is the part-time sick policy and part-time officers. So Melissa, can you please clarify what the question is here? Even though you you have already explained it. Two, I, do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Two full-time officers who became full-time after January one. After January, yeah, after January one, are questioning whether they should be given the bank of sick time to start with from when they were part-time. One was part-time for only a few months and one has been a part-time for a few years prior to going full-time. According to the policy adopted in May, it says current part-timers, starting balance is dictated by how long you've been an employee. One year or less of service will be granted twenty hours of sick time and two years or more will be granted forty hours upon first day of fiscal year twenty twenty four. Starting bit, so to reiterate, starting balance is dictated by how long you've been an employee, one year or less of service will be granted twenty hours of sick time. And two years or more will be granted forty hours.
And when that was drafted, I think the intent was because we were just putting sick place, sick leave. In place for part-time employees who were still part-time. So this is an un, kind of an unusual situation where part-time employees became full-time employees, would that be correct?
I'm sorry, I was not totally.
That's okay. When we drafted that policy for part-time employees sick leave. We drafted on the basis of part-time employees who were, continue to be part-time employees. This case is that two part-time employees became full-time employees. Which was not something we were foreseeing at the time it was drafted, but.
Well, except one had been a full-time employee before it was adopted and one became a full-time employee after it was adopted.
Correct.
And was she, I believe she was a part-time employee.
Both were part-time employees, one started as.
But but one was a part-time when it was adopted, one was a full-time when it was adopted. So the one who was currently a part-time when it was adopted would absolutely fall under current part-timers, right? Because they were a current part-time employee in May. The one who was a full-time employee is probably. Dealt with as a full-time employee.
But I think she makes a good point that she gave a few years to the town not getting any benefits and then. Only earns one and a quarter since January when she became a full-timer, whereas she would have had, if she didn't become a full-timer, she would have had a bank built up of the forty hours.
But she gets one and a quarter sick days, so it's July, and so she should have like eight and three quarters.
Per month, per month.
And they don't. And but they don't even, do you even get? When you become a full-time employee, how soon can you use your sick leave? Right, like.
Cause you only get one and a quarter.
One and a quarter days, however, yeah, per month, okay.
But she should have already exceeded.
It's just. Ten hours? Is that ten hours?
Yeah, but it's not here.
It's fifteen days a year. But it's like, I'm trying to compare that, so it's ten hours, one of four days. I should put in a whole day as eight.
What the, what the employee handbook says about new hires and why new hires may not get sick leave is it says. The adult handbook, which are still out there, probationary employee, newly hired personnel may be subject to a probationary period. Of between two and six months as determined by their supervisor and or appointing authority, during this period, they are not eligible for sick leave. And shall have no right to contest termination of their employment.
That's on your sick time or your?
Oh, your probationary employee.
So that's why I was thinking they might not get it.
So, let's deal with this.
But it's a sick one probation period.
Are they both on a year probation?
Yeah, but.
Let's deal with this one at a time, so I think the the one, the the officer who was a part-time employee when the policy was adopted. Was absolutely subject to the current part-timers clause here because she was while it was adopted. So she was one year less and so she should be granted twenty hours, right, that's pretty simple, so boom, she had twenty hours to start. Then the other employee was a full-time employee when this was passed. And it would be completely unfair.
To give the one.
To give the one with far less experience twenty hours and not give her. Did she have two years or more?
Part-time.
Yeah, so I I think she gets forty hours, I mean, I think it's fair.
Yeah, I I I kind of think so. The second situation.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think.
Yes, that's why I think. I think that's fair.
I think that's pretty fair.
The only final question would be the use of the sick time during the probation ID. But that's a good, but it's a good question whether that's okay.
Well, one, that definition really needs to be revisited, because if you get. If you get promoted from part-time officer to full-time officer and you get a probationary appointment. But you've been with the town for years, you shouldn't be deprived of benefits that you previously had.
I know, I agree. And particularly because it's like, you know, there's a lot of reasons to use sick time, so maybe you shouldn't be things that people are doing, but. I would prefer not to have someone come to work sick, because a person who comes to work sick and spread illness, right? So not allowing people to be absent if they're ill is generally speaking a bad policy for the health of your office, right? So, um, I mean, obviously, that's not, it depends why you're sick. Um, but I I'm inclined, I agree with you, like, if they've already been serving the town, the probationary.
Yeah, that that would, that's, that's not right.
I I agree.
So we need to revisit that definition and and the, and make sure it's, didn't carry it into the new handbook. That we're working on.
And I have no idea how to fix that wording to accommodate this, but I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to see, I see the actual hand you're doing, I don't know why you're not seeing it.
Yeah, neither do I, but what I'll do for now is just get my years and and uh not quit.
But but your point is still a little bit, that the the system, we need to, I don't know how to do it. Somehow we need to sort out what the problems are and figure out how each one can be solved, so that people are.
There's good, you know, we can go back from, it's a database, so there could be some kind of reporting system that they could use automatically generated.
There?
I get reports and and payroll gets reported, so when payroll has been submitted, what's going through. We wouldn't send that to all the employees because they get other people's information.
Uh, yeah, but, well, the problem seems to be with the salary employees.
It's really not. I I think maybe a few more lessons on how to enter in would help.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we given nine? You made a decision, right?
Yes, so the decision is, the decision is if there's no opposition, um.
You've been there, right, yeah.
Forty hours for the employee who's worked for years for the police department and twenty hours for the employee who worked for months for the police department. Um, and starting in May, whenever that was.
Okay.
Wait.
What?
New hires beginning, accruing from day one, however they know how to use sick time until the ninetieth calendar day.
That's for part-time.
Yeah, but it's, no, how to turn to full-time.
Where you're.
It looks for everyone, looks for everyone.
We're looking at the.
I mean, I I don't think.
Sorry, this is, I think this is the sick, oh, I see, okay.
I don't think either of them are new within ninety days.
You used for the ninetieth day after hire.
But, but that's that, I just noticed. Um, you guys have things to justify your company lease?
Oh, I exchanged emails with Donna, I, you know, when. Melissa brought up the previous lawyer's case where he said this is why.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris was on vacation, Donna wrote back and basically said it's not a direct comparison. That the comparison was they were providing funds to redo a battleship.
A battlefield memorial.
Yeah, and that's, that's not.
Just a person that's benefiting.
Yeah, right, there's not a company, it's not an asset in the middle of the town, she, you know. So what I did with Melissa and I went over yesterday and she provided me the PDF. With the company, Monterey Fire Company, when they set up as. Yeah, article of organization, so I forwarded that to her and Chris today. And but Chris is on vacation and that's who I was dealing with, I should have read it and I'd ask Chris to call me or contact me when he's back from vacation.
Right. I mean, I I have to say that I, the, I agree that the battlefield monument isn't an exact comparison. However, if you read through there, it's not just about that, it's about whether the money, public money is being used. To better individuals, private individuals. And we're talking about repairing a building that houses the town's very expensive equipment.
Yeah, but the question is the process for handling, how do we improve that building? So that's what has to be worked through, if you read the articles, it talks about in the end, you said that point four. You know, you told me to read that, I read the whole thing. And that article said that even if it was dissolved, it has to be used for public safety of the town of Monterey.
Right, but what Susan's saying and and what I was trying to get at with my questions is, you're saying the process about that part. But we're saying the process about whether it has to go through bidding and and the least things that are bringing up. So I will, I was saying that that court case says that we don't have to go through bidding. And, um, and that we don't violate the anti-aide amendment.
I mean, like, I'm saying I don't think we violate the anti-aide amendment, be, if on the basis of the wording in there that. The anti-aide is about private individuals benefiting from public money. But if we are using this money to repair a building that is housing, the purpose is to house the town fire department. And the town fire vehicles. I don't, there there's no person that's benefiting, the town is benefiting, and the building itself defaults to the town, should be on the itself.
Yeah, but it's. I know, but there's the whole procurement process.
But that's what I'm trying to find is to rectify.
Right, so that's, right, right.
Yeah, that it's there, it's, you you know, the question, we can give them the money, the question is how is the procurement. Gonna have to be handled, can we give them the money to spend it?
Right.
Or do we have to say, we have, that's what.
And that's the part you're right, I know that, that's one of the parts, I'm also trying to find out if we have to go through the public bidding, which has the prevailing wage and all that.
Right, right, right.
That court case says you don't, so they didn't answer that question.
Uh, I I didn't wanna, you know, because Donna, I'm sorry, you know, I could sit there and run the bill up, you know, but Donna wrote this, you know.
I think I figured it out.
Right. Yeah, no, I get it.
You know, and you know, so I will wait till when Chris gets back.
Back, okay. So, so it's two parts, is it, is it, is there even a consideration of the anti-aide amendment? The second part is, even if there isn't, do we have to, what's the bidding process?
Right, and then, well, there's three parts, and then my 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 second question was what the accountant offered for a way to. Ward the lease and release the monies that would also not have to go through the bidding process, and I wanted confirmation. If they were comfortable with that, yeah, there was, it was, I think, a part two A and B and.
Okay, I did see that that.
All right.
Do I, was it?
I sent it to all of you.
To all of us, all right, I'm gonna have to find that, do you know what the subject line was?
Monterey Fire something.
Okay.
F D.
All right.
Can Justin come back to me?
I think so.
Justin.
Yeah.
We're good. Oh, wait, okay.
Okay, does the town administrator or any board members have any unanticipated business?
I have a few, actually. Um, August twenty ninth. The Courtney wants to meet with you guys to to show the revised plans. Um, she would like to meet over at the library though, so that she can use their equipment, um, with the projector and and all that stuff. Excuse me, you just mentioned the library and I didn't hear what you said. I just heard library, I go, I better listen.
Courtney, the woman, person organizing the.
We want to hold our meeting at the library on August twenty ninth, and I want to know if they're okay with that, so I could put in the use request form.
I'm okay with it.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's Tuesday. Who's gonna use it?
Because we meet on Tuesday.
Or we meet on Tuesday.
Select.
August twenty ninth.
It's it's a regular, basically, we hold on regularly there, not here.
Select. Sure.
Yeah.
Yes. And maybe keep the agenda to just.
A short, is it right?
Yeah.
Good one.
That's okay.
Okay, so that's good. Um, the training that's next week.
August.
Right, a couple of questions about that, um, it's gonna conflict with your first meeting of the month being at nine. Do you wanna just switch the first and the eighth and meet at six on the first and and nine on the um the eighth?
I mean, here I was hoping it would force us to get finished by ten thirty.
Um.
Oh, well, I mean, you can do that if you want.
Or you, well, the only thing is I'm doing the the one o'clock, which I guess I could change to the to the other one. But that would be not ideal. Um, switching is fine for me, the other thing that I was saying about is skipping.
Do you think we have enough material that we need to meet? Some of these things that are continued, I thought that they'll be completed by next week anyway.
Well, I I'm not, I'm not coming.
Right, I think you and I use it two weeks.
Yeah, we could get to work on the computer stuff, the capital policy, I can't guess as good as mine.
So I was another, um, the son of Berkshire, we may have the contract that we may not.
I don't think Chris is still off another week.
So it's a fire company, so it seems like we can take the week off and just.
Yeah. We, I'm. And too, I talked to Sean, I'll drop him a note about meeting with him too.
Okay.
So we will skip the meeting next week, no meeting, no select board meeting, never show me.
Um, you and I talked about it, I just wanted to have it confirmed. Cause we had previously had a conversation about how part-time employees would be compensated for the training, but I don't know if we ever.
We never resolved that.
We never resolved it, and I thought that the what we had finally put on the table about it was that they would be compensated for the time of the training plus mileage. We have a mileage policy in the handbook, and I had the impression that we thought that that was fair, but we didn't make a final decision, and the training's next week, so we kinda need to. Because people are gonna be putting in their time for this, and I think we have to make a decision of what we think is reasonable.
Uh, I think two two thoughts, I don't have a problem with that, but I did think we need to come up with a policy for the part-time, how you, doesn't it get the train?
I don't understand.
Well, I mean, some of them, if you're working a full-time job, and you say, you know, it's not during your hours.
Right.
You know, we need to get the personnel manager, these are gonna come up, cause we have part-time employees, you know.
Mm-hmm.
During, you know, so.
So there needs to be an opportunity for them to train at a different time.
But we need to, we need to, you know, go back to personnel, how are we, how are we gonna handle this? What is, we're not the only one in this position.
There there, I think there's always conflicts, that there must be a way to handle it.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I don't know about you, but it seems to me there's always conflicts, so sometimes, like, if you have a bunch of people, it's very hard to get everybody able to attend to anything, right? I mean, I guess remote stuff has helped that, but still.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, I don't know, where does that leave us with that? Because we need to have a, it seems to me it's only fair to be clear if the training's next week, we're gonna.
If we need, if we need to provide some direction.
And do we need to have a conversation with Sophia about that part, about what happens when we're attending?
Well, I think Sophie needs to be involved, because, you know, there are things where, you know, you know, is it, is it, you know, videotape where the person, you know, and they're given access when they're at work to do go somewhere on the computer to look at the training, you know. The, I mean, we need to have that kind of guidance on how, cause she has additional, my understanding, she's planning additional training.
Right.
So it's not, it's a, it's not a.
So there's two things, one is how do we compensate people who do attend? And the second is what what options do we have for people who, for whatever reason, tend to attend, right?
Can't, no, but they still need to get the training somewhere.
Right, exactly, right, that that, so there has to be either an alternate time or an alternate means in some way, whether it's a
Yeah. Yeah. True.
I think the problem you sometimes run into is if there's a training that requires some type of hands-on interaction, it's very hard to schedule it in time for everyone, but it's made by people that don't even know what to do, right?
Yeah, but but some of it is videotapes, some of it's videotape.
At least they have some part of it.
You know, they sign it, I've watched it, if you have it on file, that they've been trained, because they're.
Yeah, as long as it's not my nurse that trained remotely and never had hands-on, I'm okay.
And she did try for that for this one, just, you know, they present her, these were the times that they were available, it's a live person, and there was no recording of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think down the road.
Yes, going forward.
Of course.
We're doing things differently.
You're gonna actually have life, and two is that, you know, we're running twenty-four hours, seven days a week, you know, so we had to have stuff like that. But it's doable, but Sophie needs to line it up, what are the uh anticipated problems, and how am I gonna do it? Two is when they do do it, they sign a release saying, yeah, I have watched this, I understand this training, that way, if you ever gotten a predicament.
There'd be.
If you can't tell, oh, I don't know, you know, you know, those, you have to, you have to think it through, you know, it's just
No, it's like they were trained, yeah, go back.
You're gonna watch this website and not have any kind of.
And no, no certainty that they've completed whatever.
Yeah, there are some websites that you.
That login, yeah.
You log in and they.
We had one of the, the like, what was it, the Harvard Ventures training or whatever, we had to
I.
log in and it gave you a certificate of recognition.
Yeah, I have the training at another employment, um, that's like an online uh class and questionnaire and such, a lot of.
And then it gives you a like, a form at the end.
Yeah, but it tells you, ours was set up, you could come back to it, you didn't have to complete it, you know.
Right, but when you completed it, then you got.
But I think it's a really good thing in in a way for the organization, because it's proof, hey, we asked employees to take this training, and here's proof that they did, but they got a test and whatnot. Not just that they happened to show up at a class, I mean, both are now, I'm I'm kinda the guy's internet stuff, but.
I guess. Yeah, I know, I think that in person makes a big difference, but.
Well, I think it is, but it it, the workforce is so different, man, it's just, one shoe doesn't, one size doesn't, you know.
Sometimes. But something better than nothing, yeah. That all, so, but are we agreed that the compensation offered to part-time employees who attend this training are getting the time of the training plus mileage?
I don't know.
Is that yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, and I I'll say yes too, and you were accusing yourself?
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Okay.
Um. One other random thought, Melissa, I just remembered the housing rehab loan payment, is something that it came to?
Yes. Yeah.
The house that we got it for, the address was in San Antonio. It's concerned me, and I'm thinking maybe it's someone whose property borders Monterey in San Antonio. Or maybe they had two house or something, but it was very odd that we got a housing rehab loan check.
Is this the one that you just signed the um?
A few weeks ago.
That's the. Once ago, I'm a mortgage, there you.
Yeah, like, they had the, we got the mortgage, I just, I assume there's probably a reason why, but the last thing in the world I want is we spend that money
Okay. I'm not asking for nothing. But the other side of that.
And then find out it wasn't supposed to be.
That money we won't be able to spend, but that that's that's higher than the amount.
Yeah.
So there would be restrictions on that, I'll have a check with Cassie on.
Okay.
There's also the possibility that, like, if it was someone's parent was living in Monterey, like, you know what I mean, like, there's weird things.
Yeah, but also they would know this person, and they vaguely knew that they were living in a different town, and vaguely knew that they kinda sold their house.
It is weird, they would like to know. Yeah, right.
So.
So that is weird.
It is kinda weird. Um, and then the address on the check and or paperwork, whatever the paperwork was, was also San Antonio, and it was.
So we need to check to make sure it was on the F D O.
Yeah, I just thought about that, but anyway.
Um, was that, did you have a case about the training?
I'm nothing about the training, it's just the one other thing that I mentioned as I gave to you today, which was, which we. We talked about a lot of things, so, so not that I wanna go back to this payroll thing, um, but a large part of the issue was communication and not including me in communication. And I feel that if you and I were having our weekly meetings, I think we're supposed to, that you and I could have talked about this and resolved it without it coming to a select board meeting. So I just suggested to Susan, and you can run with it if you want to, that maybe we go back to either the old way of everybody contributes for the agenda, or someone that doesn't have a full-time job and can meet with me more frequently, take over doing the agenda, so that we can go over the items and not make these public spectacles, because, you know, I I was under the impression we're trying, and we have moved forward very well, it's so wonderful in town hall, um, that, you know, we're trying to keep personnel issues and these accusations flying back and forth from not being in a select board meeting unless it absolutely has to.
So the the reason I put it on the agenda, first of all, Susan and Frank have always been willing to put anything on the agenda that they like, but I think.
Yeah, I I've never felt excluded.
Um, the reason I put it on the agenda, and I still think it was a good reason to do it, is because there's been some ongoing problems, um, that was one of the problems, it was not, if I, if it was a disciplinary item, I would not have just posted on the agenda like that. It was not a disciplinary item, it was, I am aware that in the organization of the town, there are employees who haven't been compensated properly, and that's a problem, and it's something the board should be aware of and make sure gets resolved, because that is not a good thing for an organization, and that's what it was about.
And I.
And if anything, it was probably contracted services who aren't even employees that made mistakes that were costly, and so I think it was a good thing to have on the agenda, um, and to discuss and to raise awareness and to try to figure something out, because it, you know, it just was a problem um that had to be addressed, and.
Except what it did was it caused a bunch of animosity here. Because the emails that I was excluded from that made accusations, and even your email to me made it sound like things haven't been running right here, which, if you and I were having meetings, maybe you would have expressed those things to me, and I would have been aware, and we could have talked it out and gotten to the problem and decided who it was. And then, you know, the treasurer is hearing of these emails and accusations, and nobody knows who's being accused, and she's now upset, and she requested an executive session if any of this was gonna be talked about. So I think it just, it it really caused a lot of negative.
I I have to admit that when I read Seibel's letter, I thought that this was taking a totally different direction. Like, I I I'm completely respectful of the operational error that he raised, and I agree that it seems like it's not that particular thing is a one-off, but there are other problems that we need to work on. But the letter from Mr. Seibel made me think that this was directed rather differently, and I was certainly concerned by.
And when you read it with all the attachments, it makes it even worse, because there's copies of time cards, and then the accusation of somebody changing a time card. So I went through all the reports to learn who approved them and who made any changes.
Well, but I showed Susan, and I think other people saw it, on the payroll, and this is, by the way, a huge problem,
Right.
which totally warrants bringing the board, someone crossed out payment for, on the split payroll of the first half, and didn't clarify in the second half to make sure that someone got paid properly.
Okay, so the the second, again, these were things that I would have talked with you about, that we would have handled immediately.
You know.
So the way that the system is set up is that we're all putting in our hours, and so that that also, this is a whole kind of blighted issue. So the weeks, a couple of weeks before this, apparently, Don had asked to not lock his time anymore. Um, and it was explained to him that all the salary employees have to lock their time, and it's it's for tracking purposes, that we know, you know, what these if we, if when I leave here, you know, do you need someone that works thirty hours a week, or do you need someone that works ninety hours a week, you know? And you can see from my logging in and out, how many, and it works the same for Jim, the chief of police, the library director, and Don Clausen. So Don is being, apparently, the principal assessor is being paid for a salary of an assumed seventeen point five hours a week. He's not logging in for that, so that week, he only logged in for five hours. The system, because it was so low, only paid him for the five hours.
Actually, in that two-week time period.
No, it's the one-week time period, this was a split payroll, this is a split payroll.
Well, I'm just saying, in the two-week time period, I think it was close to sixty hours that he logged.
So again, it's a split payroll, and you're not looking at it, so just go your twenty-three, you can't go by hours, because he's salary.
So sixty, yeah. I know, I I know that, apparently, payroll people did, I mean, I know that, and and
Okay.
you know, I'm all for discussing issues, I think that this one in particular had to come to the board, because the board had to know, and it was serious, and that's why I brought it to the board. Um, it's not about bringing up every little thing that.
That's fair, but that's fair, I just think have we, had I been aware, it wouldn't have become such an issue prior to the meeting and getting everybody all riled up.
Or at least, I, you know, I, like I said, I was based on the emails, I was like, what?
You even came in a little hot.
I was like, pretty concerned.
Everybody was hot.
And I.
Someone hot, I was curious.
Well, you weren't as hot.
I was, I was pretty hot, I was just, it was, I was flashing back to last year, right, because of some of the language in there.
I'm curious what's going on.
Um, and I'm not downplaying the issue, but from from my perspective, it seems like it's a problematic structural issue, it's not malfeasance on any of these parts.
And I think it's, it's structural.
Yeah, it it is, and that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be fixed, it it isn't a problem, but no one was intentionally going out to
Yeah.
cause harm, they just screwed up, and that's just a problem, but, right, but.
It was a mistake, it was, you know, some of it's.
And when you're getting emails that you're gonna go to the, you know, labor division and and the federal whatever, you know, I mean, so we got Sophia involved, so Sophia is now going to schedule a meeting for Friday to review, like, how the process should have happened, and she'll do any investigation.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
But I I guess I'm just thinking, like, it would make sense to me, like, if you're, because of your work schedule,
Are you sure?
you're not able to meet on a regular, I mean, could you maybe FaceTime, like, cause I do think it's important for the chair to be talking on the regular.
No, I can, I can. I can meet, and frankly, I mean, I think, you know, usually, the agenda setting is fairly easy, and.
Yes, but there are things that I do need to talk to you about.
But maybe it's not just about the agenda, I mean, I do think it's important for the select board members to be meeting periodically with the town administrator,
Yeah.
Right.
and the chair most of all, and you're, it's your signature on a lot of stuff, right? It it seems like that's important, even if it's sometimes occurring, like, on your lunch hour or FaceTime or whatever, because you can't physically get here, like, that just seems like it's a good idea to me.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, Melissa and I have met, and I've come in, um, on most weeks, I think I was in last week on Monday.
Yeah, but we're not.
So I mean, it's not like it's been a month where I haven't been in town hall, it's been, I was in last week on Monday.
Okay, that's good, right. It's been a month though since we've met, since the agenda.
Well, that completely.
So, and that's the important thing, right, so, a a regular meeting of, you know, like, on Thursday, because the agenda coming out on Friday now is is helpful, so it's helpful for me to go over the agenda items, even if it's not to discuss something like that, if you put something on there, like, do I need to have something ready for it, and do you need to tell me a little bit more about the research that, I mean, you know what we used to talk about? So for the last month, we haven't met about the agenda, it's just been a really quick via email, and I just, I don't wanna see a problem like this happen again, so I'm asking for a solution, either a definitive date and time on a Thursday that you and I can meet before the budget or the agenda is posted, or if somebody else can assume that responsibility.
No, yeah, I can, I can meet, and and like I said, I was in last week on Monday, changing the, changing the, changing the
No, Thursday, Thursday. Before the agenda's posted.
Changing the meeting schedule completely, three things for a day, more than anything.
Yes, right. Yep.
Um, but no, I mean, I think, we'll see going forward, but I, it may not always be on Thursday, but I will be in town hall, and and most of the time that we're setting agenda, it's really, really non-controversial, um. So that's all I have to say there.
Okay.
Um. Minutes?
Minutes?
Unless, well, actually, technically, comments and questions from the public comes before minutes.
Okay. Okay. What's due minutes? Why don't you do your minutes?
Did anybody have anything on the seven fourteen minute?
I didn't, but I wasn't there.
I didn't either.
I was on Thursday, Friday, no, I got it, got it.
Yeah, so I know if we approve the minutes of the select board meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three?
I have second amendment.
I go, yes?
Oh, yes.
Oh, Stan.
I only have changes from, yeah, that's why it's not.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I had late changes, Sophie wanna move that to next week?
Okay.
Cause I had changes too. But I sent them in on the other side.
No problem, that works for me, I mean, we didn't keep it up pretty well, I think, so.
Okay, well, and we won't meet next week, so in theory.
So we next meet two weeks from today, at sex, correct?
Yeah, you got the first, you still got training.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Um, so we'll meet on August eighth at six P M, and then probably again on the fifteenth and twenty-second at six P M, and probably on the twenty-ninth at six P M at the library, that's our meeting schedule for August.
So, and we're just not having a nine A M meeting this month, right?
Yeah, alright.
Just confirming, okay. Cool.
Motion to adjourn.
And do we have to, I will just quickly say that school.
Rested in an all-eight town, it's like our meeting, if it does, if other towns don't wanna do all eight, we'll just do ourselves and we'll find a time, probably in months.
Yeah.
That that sounds, that sounds good, and like, we should also know whether if we do all eight towns, towns are sending a rep, or, I mean, it's an open meeting, so we can all know.
I would go.
I would like to go too, cause I really wanna hear what the other towns say, and what, how many.
Yeah, well, I wanna see it for cost, or really what they said.
And and all of it, like, I feel like I, yeah, it's all up there on the website.
But she. Yeah, but last time she met, what, eighteen months ago here? She's, she's.
Was it, was it that long ago?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, didn't we meet there twice, maybe once more recently?
I, I, maybe I missed one more recently, but she said it'd be a fifty thousand dollar grant for us.
I I think it was. A what?
Fifty thousand dollar, our share per year would be fifty thousand dollar grant.
Right.
Plus the.
Which was a small portion of the total plan compared to the others.
Yeah, but it was, the the stay was given like fifty million, and then you have to divide, but.
Yeah, I know. Well, and then it goes up, because when when we stop paying the bond on Southern Berkshire, it's just, but whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it it would, it'd be interesting to see what the dollars are now.
It's not just the bond, it's the interest, that's.
Cause that's the thing, I mean, a lot of people are gonna look at it, I mean, I think it's personal, it's something.
Yeah. So the devil's always in the details, and I have my doubts about these particular details, but.
We'll look at it, so that will be on the agenda, and we'll discuss scheduling if it ends up being.
Okay.
So we'll vote on the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
And we'll vote?
Yes.
Yes, so meeting adjourned at seven fifty-four P M, yes, for me.